Calling to order the Monday, March 6, 2023, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Dooley.
Here.
Mayor Protam Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Gavin with support from Councilmember Patterson. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Dooley.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We've now come to the first public comments portion of our meeting where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department, please leave your name and contact information on the table located in the hallway just outside the doors. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city Ms. Mitchell, have you received any communication to be entered into the record this evening?
Um, yes, Your Honor, I have. Joel Olford, Berkeley stated, "Mr. Baumgartner answered most of the questions he had from the previous regular city council meeting. However, he still has questions regarding the capital improvement plan." He listed out specific questions he has, which will be forwarded to the city manager. He stated he doesn't see justification for some of the expenditures in the master plan and has further questions regarding the DDA budget. Carol Schiffman, Berkeley urges council to support O-523. She said the issue of puppy mills and abuse is not new, but the recent opening of Puppygram has brought it to Berkeley. Paul Jordan, Berkeley supports passing an ordinance to prohibit the commercial sale of dogs, cats, rabbits, and the like in Berkeley.
Thank you. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, February 6, 2023, and special work session on Wednesday, February 8, 2023. Ordinance number 120, oh, 123, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 2-39 of Article 2, Officers and Employees of Chapter 2 Administration, to modify provisions relating to insurance and indemnification of city officials, employees, and board and commission members. Three, ordinance number oh, 223, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to the city code to amend section 94-9, Portable Signs in Chapter 94 Signs, and section 138-108, Promotional Events, in Chapter 138, Zoning of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to remove the requirements for annual permits for portable signs, and clarify portable sign regulations in relation to temporary events. Four, ordinance number oh, 323, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend section 138-32, section 138-387, section 138-394, section 138-419, section 138-427, section 138-457, section 138-487, and section 138-529 of Chapter 138 Zoning of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances in order to regulate vape shops. Five, ordinance number oh, 423, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend section 138-458 of Chapter 138 Zoning in order to add nursery schools, day nurseries, and child centers to the 12-mile district as a special use.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Dooley. Are there any corrections or additions? Okay, hopefully, thank God, none. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dooley.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Recognitions, Presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda?
Motion number M-1723, matter of awarding the contract for the library painting project to Industrial Painting Contractors, Inc. of Taylor, Michigan, in the amount of $24,650. In addition, allocate $2,500 for contingencies. These funds will come from account 101-738-976-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-1723?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgartner.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this was a project that we had to push back and defer in previous years, but we were able to put it on the budget for this year. Uh, this project so far, as you'll see in the memo there, has been headed by Mr. Brown, our facilities manager, who took this through our normal purchasing process.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Uh, as Matt kind of spelled out, this has been a project we've delayed a few years due to COVID and other issues. Um, we did put this out for bid back in February. We received six qualified bids. Um, after reviewing the bids with myself and Matt Church, Library Director, we've come to the recommendation that we award the bid to industrial painting contractors. Um, they've guaranteed the timeline we've set forth of, uh, two to three weeks of interior painting with minimal disruption to library services, and then as soon as the weather breaks, um, the exterior work will be done before June 2. They're going to begin this Wednesday, if approved.
Okay. Any public comments on this agenda item? Okay, I'm going to close public comments then on it and then ask council if they have any questions or comments. Thank you for your work on this. Did you, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Hey, that's me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, hello, thank you for, um, for your perseverance with this and for bringing this to our attention. Could you just recap a little bit about the potential timeframe when this project would occur and what, if any, delays or impacts this would have on, on the public?
Absolutely. They, uh, if approved, they will be beginning the interior work starting Wednesday. Um, they said about two to three weeks inside with minimal disruption. They're going to kind of pick a section and along with Matt and myself at the library will kind of dictate where they can work at a certain time period and certain day. They'll try to do some before hours, maybe some after hours painting, um, which I'll coordinate. And, uh, yeah, two to three weeks for the interior work, and then once, again, like once the weather breaks, they'll be ready to go on the outside and probably two or so weeks outside as well.
Nice. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Anyone else? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-1723?
Hunnen.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dooley.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda?
Ordinance number oh, 523, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to add Article 5 Retail Pet Store Sales in Chapter 2 Animals of the Berkeley City Code to prohibit retail pet stores in the city from selling dogs or cats.
Is there a motion to approve M-0523?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protam Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this ordinance was crafted, uh, with, uh, in conjunction with the city attorney's office, as well as several different council members. A couple weeks ago, council members began reaching out to us and administration regarding the potential for an ordinance. Uh, we were quickly able to produce what you have here, and it's modeled largely off of what we've seen in some other communities there. So, um, council has had the chance to review this, as has the public. It does, uh, has been out for a week in satisfi- satisfaction of council's rules and procedures.
Thank you. Mr. Sterren.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, so, uh, as Mr. Baumgartner just explained, and I don't want to, uh, repeat what he said so succinctly, uh, what this ordinance would do if, if adopted, and tonight is, is first reading. It's not, um, final adoption. This is our first opportunity to look at this, to consider it, to hear from residents and in, in the public on, you know, on whatever side, uh, they may be on this particular issue. But as drafted, what this proposed ordinance would do is ban the retail sale of dogs and cats in pet stores in the city of Berkeley. Um, there is a, uh, section that's been added, which is something that we haven't discussed with council, that I'm sure you'll be talking about, uh, and hearing about, which is a provision that would, um, provide basically for any existing business, pet store that is lawful and in operation as of the effective date of this ordinance. They would be allowed to continue, but only for a limited period of time, for as drafted, six months. But again, that was, I put that in front of you to, uh, you know, to get something out there to discuss, and I'm quite sure we'll have some probably spirited discussion about, um, where the city should land on that. And, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to you so you can hear from the residents rather than me yacking.
Thank you, Mr. Sterren. So I, I will be opening public comments, but before I do that, I just want to lay down some parameters. Um, you may certainly express your opinions. We want to hear them, but personal attacks will not be tolerated. Please refrain from showing support or opposition. I want to make sure that everyone who wants to speak will have a chance to do so. So no applause, please. You will have three minutes to speak, and I ask that you direct your comments to the chair. Once your three minutes are up, I ask that you please return to your seat. You may speak one time. You may not give your time to anyone else. We have a, oh, we don't have the timer. I thought we were having the timer.
I can keep time for you, Madam Mayor.
All right, I have a timekeeper. Uh, Mr. Baumgartner will let you know when your three minutes are coming to a close, um, maybe some seconds before so that people can gauge their time. So public comments are officially open. Please state your name and city of residence when you come to the microphone. Please don't be shy. It just takes the first person to get it rolling.
Right. Here we go.
Matthew Lee, Huntington Woods. Uh, I'm just going to simply state some facts. Uh, puppy mills in Michigan contribute 20,000 additional pets to the humane and animal control system in the state of Michigan every year, 20,000. Nationally, 26 million pets are put to sleep because they cannot find a home. And, uh, the practices used, uh, by such, uh, proprietors involves, uh, the Amish community, which will die, which will open up the womb of the female dogs to take the puppies out of them for profitable business. And that's all I'm going to state, is just the facts, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration when we consider selling dogs in our public domain.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Hi, my name is Courtney O'Shea. Courtney Wooton, excuse me, um, formerly O'Shea, and I live in Berkeley. Um, I am here today to speak on behalf of a breeder who is a former resident of Berkeley and longtime animal breeder that could not be here today. Her name is Jody Barber. I'll read the email that she sent. Um, the concern I'm hearing from breeders regarding the sale of animals in a retail environment are that these facilities are often, um, their concerns encompass that not only breeding practices of large breeders often used to source the animals in these situations, but also looking at the vetting process to match owners, responsibilities taken by the business after an animal is sold, and the requirements are made of new owners after a sale. It's a complex matter that addresses that and more. Jody's email states, "My name is Jody Barber. I am a former Berkeley resident. I have been in the pet industry for over 35 years, ranging from obedience training, grooming, boarding, correctional behavior training, and working in veterinary hospitals. I am also a preservation breeder bred to the standard of parent club of AKC. I have been showing AKC confirmation ring and breeding Boston Terriers and French Bulldogs since 2006. Every person that enquires interest in buying first goes through a series of questions about environment, schedule, of whom this puppy would live with, if children, and what ages. The reference both personal and previous vet references. If all starts to check out, then we proceed with meeting. Home visits, but not before a very lengthy contract that covers spaying and neutering, and which they will not receive AKC papers until fulfilled at a proper age. If there is a breeding of any sort, there's a fine pet puppy that is produced to ensure the safety of the animal and the owner of being a responsible party. For the duration of this pet's life, it is to be an inside house pet. There is a health guarantee for congenital or hereditary defects, vaccine recommendations, and at what age. Nutrition is thoroughly covered, all microchipped and registered in her name as a breeder and then buyer. The con-"
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I'll, um, forward the rest of it to council. Um, just generally in concern in talking with breeders, I've been seeking one that would be willing to sell their animals to a retail pet store and have not been able to find one. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Courtney.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Lauren Delega. I live in Franklin, Michigan, and I am a humane policy volunteer leader for Humane Society of the United States. Puppy-selling pet stores are part of a greater pipeline which funnels sick and inhumanely bred puppies into the hands of consumers. The whole system lacks transparency. Puppy purchasers don't know the cruelty they are supporting. Puppy mills, with many recorded animal welfare violations and hundreds of dogs confined to small cages for the entirety of their lives. Pet stores often sell their puppies for thousands of dollars with false promises of humane, regulated breeders, and healthy, socialized puppies, when this is rarely true. The ordinance protects consumers from misleading sales tactics, sick, sick puppy sales, high vet bills, and predatory lending that so often occurs when consumers can't afford a puppy outright. Under the current language, businesses selling puppies would have six months to transition to a new humane business model that can be even more lucrative than selling puppies. In 2021, Americans spent $123 billion on their pets, with food, products, and services fueling the industry. Morgan Stanley reported this spending is poised to triple by 2030. According to Pet Business Magazine, of the top 25 pet stores in America, only one sells puppies, and in 2022, that change shrunk while competitors who don't sell puppies are growing. This is evidence that no pet store needs to sell puppies to be profitable. Pet stores can thrive by providing pet owners with everything they need to care for their pets rather than selling the pets themselves. And rest assured, Berkeley resins would still be able to get the pet of their choice from responsible breeders who sell directly to the public or from the many shelters and rescues in the area. Six states, 450 localities, have prohibited the sales of dogs and cats in pet stores, including East Point, Frazier, New Baltimore, Royal Oak, Harbor Springs, and St. Clair Shores here in Michigan. These laws have shrunk demand for puppies bred in cruel conditions, with public records showing 32,000 fewer breeding dogs in USDA-licensed puppy mills than 10 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good evening. My name's Bee Friedlander, and I'm from Canton, Michigan. I'm the board president of a nonprofit located in Canton called Attorneys for Animals. The reason I'm here tonight is to address what I believe may be concerns on the part of the council as far as whether an existing store, um, can, should be grandfathered in. In other words, not even given the six months, uh, that the, that the ordinance is currently drafted provides. And what I would say is that there is not that kind of concern. Um, I think you've all been provided by, with a memo that is done by the Humane Society of the United States, and they have a puppy mill campaign. And I think you'll see there that there are lawsuits that have been brought around the country, none in Michigan, even though we have these bans, as the previous speaker said. They've been brought in federal court and state court. None have been successful. Uh, there are some pending, but they have the same legal theory behind them. The second thing I want to mention is, in Michigan, uh, about, in about 2017 or 18, there was a bill introduced in the state legislature. And what that would do, it would have done is to preempt local governments from being able to pass a law such as the one you're considering. That bill actually was vetoed by then-Governor Snyder in late 2018, one of the last acts that he did as governor. And he said in his veto that, um, let me find it here. He said that, well, I will paraphrase, that it's something that is essentially a local concern, that there shouldn't be a statewide, um, ban. Finally, I would point the council to the fact that the Attorney General issued fairly recently a consumer alert on puppy scams, including a part that says buying a puppy from a pet store. Almost all pet store puppies come from puppy mills, and then it goes on to talk about some of the conditions that you've mentioned. So, in conclusion, there isn't a real issue-
Thank you, Ms. Friedlander.
-with, with the city council's action. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Dillon, Farmington Hills. I won't need the three minutes. Um, with regard to the grandfathering provision, I would leave it to your city attorney to research that and give you a more full opinion about it. But the situation here, as I understand it, is that the city of Berkeley approved the Puppygram store and green-lighted the, the expenditure of well north of $100,000 to set up the business. And just as the business opens, you are now passing an ordinance to prohibit the business. It would seem to me more appropriate, given, a lot of concerns have been raised about inhumane treatment of animals. Um, in my life, I've had a number of sheltered dogs. I have a rescue cat, um, but I believe in free choice. And so it would seem to me that an ordinance that is designed to prevent inhumane treatment of animals should address the issues that speak to the inhumane treatment of the animals, banning, um, puppy mills, um, some of the, uh, practices that were alleged, but just a blanket ban just seems to, um, it just seems inappropriate, in particular with regard to a business that you green-lighted, and then just as the business opens the doors, you say, no, you've got six months. Perhaps a grandfathering without a limitation would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, though?
Good evening, Mayor, Dean, Council. Uh, Miles Handy, Kokomo, Indiana. Um, we can agree on one thing. We hate puppy mills just as much as everybody back here hates puppy mills. That's why we opened Puppygram. When we talk about the scams, the internet scams that have taken advan- advantages of our seniors, our, our community members, um, it's, it's real. But that's not, that's one of the reasons why I started Puppygram, because we are full of transparency. I, I sent, uh, one council member a couple of our breeders, uh, information. Um, we have no problem, um, being, having full transparency. As, as Channel 2 came in and talked to me for 30, 45 minutes today, we have nothing to hide, okay? We're not perfect. We, we're doing a, a great job and a great service, and that's why this is our third location in the, in the past year and a half, with thousands of thousands of happy individuals. Because, you know, not everybody can have a sheltered dog. You know, there's, there's young children out there, um, some of them with, uh, um, issues, medical issues, um, autistic. They need dogs with certain temperaments. Our breeders, you know, breed for temperament. They have certain characteristics for seniors' lifestyles, and that's our job, is to provide the right knowledge so the right puppy goes to the right individual. You know, I don't think a Bernese Mountain Dog would be a good choice for, for, uh, my 96-year-old grandmother, you know, um, but, uh, a five-pound, uh, Maltese or maybe a Cavapoo would be a good choice. So that's part of our thing. As far as overcrowding of the shelters and that, it's not because of establishments like Puppygram. And we don't even consider ourselves a pet store. We consider us, uh, ourself, uh, a, a, uh, pet service business because we want to get to know our customers and make sure they have the right animal that fits their, need their lifestyle, and that's the important thing. And, um, you know, I welcome every one of you to sit down, come see, see me, come see our establishment, and let's discuss this, you know, in a, in a, in a frame that makes sense for all residents. But we do believe in one thing, you know, we hate puppy mills, just like they hate puppy mills, but we do think people should have a choice for their lifestyle. So I would, I would hope that we can come to some resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Handy.
Hi, Council. Um, my name is Rachel Schuler. I'm a proud former resident of Berkeley, um, and now a proud resident of Royal Oak, Michigan, that does have a ordinance in place to ban the retail sales of puppies, kittens, and rabbits. Um, I am just going to read off a graphic from the Bailey Knelt Benji, um, nonprofit organization that is campaigning against puppy mills and brings light to puppy mills across the United States. I can also forward this to the council, uh, to refer back to. So, the pet's choice location in Kokomo, Indiana, buys their puppies from Phil Hoover Show Me Puppies, Memphis, Missouri, 396 adult breeding dogs, and 181 puppies. Tiffany Curz, Tiffany's LLC, Frankfurt, Missouri, puppy broker that houses hundreds of puppies, and was named- of puppies and was named one of the worst puppy mills in the country in 2019. As a reminder, all of the breeders that I'm reading and that are listed are associated with the pet store, Pet's Choice, Kokomo, Indiana, with, that sold puppies or kittens to the stores in 2020, 2019, and 2018. Herman Tony Schindler, QD Kennels, Frankfurt, Missouri, puppy broker of one hundred and twenty-six puppies at the time of last inspection. QD Kennels also runs QD Transports and transported puppies to the store. Kurt and Lori Conrad, Conrad's Cuddly Canines LLC, Frankfurt, Missouri, ninety-four puppies. Brian Moorfield, Select Puppies, AKA Lucky Puppies Company, West Point, Iowa, seventy-three puppies at the time of last inspection. Select Puppies transported puppies to the store. Brian L., I don't want to butcher his last name, Brian L., Michelle Cruz, Anne Giella Nichols, T&amp;M Enterprises, West Point, Iowa, eighty-four adult breeding dogs, four hundred and thirty-four puppies. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schuler. This will be the last call for public comments before I close them. Okay. It's 7:31. I'm closing public comments, and now I'm going to turn this over to council. Discussion from council. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Baker.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank everyone here for their, for their feedback and thoughts and for just taking the time to reach out and communicate to us and to me and to be here tonight. Takes time out of your schedule, and it shows your commitment to this cause. I've learned a lot, I've taken a lot of notes during this, and as our city attorney mentioned, this draft ordinance, which is just in the first reading, which means whether it passes or, if it passes tonight, it's not law yet, there's still another reading with opportunities to revisit this. I'd like to reflect and learn and think more about what we've heard tonight, in particular with regards to that second section, what is it, 22-103, having to do with the grandfathering thing. I think there's some work we can do with that one. And so, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to, I guess, my own motion, to table that portion of the ordinance pending further conversations. So, you know, I'm comfortable with the first pit. I think we all agree about puppy mills and things, and I just want, I think there's more work we can do to consider with the second one.
Okay, there's a friendly amendment on the table, motion to make a friendly amendment on the table. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Hannon. Any discussion from council?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Baker.
So, you know, can we find a set of regulations where retail dog and cat sales can be done humanely and safely? I'm very skeptical. You know, I've done a lot of research, and I believe the evidence is that retail dog and cat sales is not compatible with humane treatment, but perhaps I'm wrong, and it's possible. So, we've moved very quickly here, and I want to make sure when we're impacting an existing business that we're on rock-solid legal standing. And so, you know, I want us to take the time and make sure when we are impacting an existing business, we get that part right, but I don't want to hold back prohibiting any other stores from opening, so, you know, this bifurcation of the ordinance, I support. And if there is full transparency and nothing to hide, then there should be no problem if we add strict regulations, you know, that demonstrate humane treatment, the entire chain of the sourcing of the animals. So, you know, I want us to move with all haste to get those regulations in place, but also make sure that we do it, you know, just very solid and very, you know, with very solid legal standing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Baker.
Actually, I have some questions for Mr. Handy.
Sure.
So, how many years have you said that you've been in business?
Well, I started in the pet industry back in 1989.
Well, how about, let's, let me narrow that down with Puppygram.
We started Puppygram about three years ago.
Okay. And how many puppies have you sold since then?
Well, I'd rather not disclose that at this point.
How many breeders are you working with?
We have a breeder network of two hundred.
And what is the average number of puppies at each breeder?
You know, a lot of our, can I, can I talk about our breeders? Because there's a lot of, you know, we're working with USDA-approved breeders, mostly, a few hobbies breeders, but we're also working with Purdue University Veterinary School with their canine care certification, which Purdue University is one of the top veterinarian schools in the United States. So, what they've done is put together a program that has five pillars of care for animals, from socialization to genetic testing to, you know, many other things, including, you know, limiting breeding and that type of thing, too. So, primarily, we're working with those type of breeders. That's why we're now working with puppy mills.
How many puppies have you sold?
How many puppies have I sold in a lifetime?
In three years.
You know, I don't have the number offhand, but several.
No further questions? Thank you.
Anybody else? Or we, you know, feel free to the council to reach out with me. You know, I'll make my cellphone available to the city manager, and I will be, you know, in the area. Actually, I'll be back in this area this weekend, you know, and I welcome, you know, anybody to come in and talk. We'd love to, you know, show you what we're, we do and what we're all about. We're not perfect, but some of the things that are discouraging, and I know Berkeley is a town of inclusion, when we have somebody come in and bash somebody's religion, that's kind of off-base. We don't care about people's religion, we do care about utmost the integrity and the care that our breeders have for their animals.
Any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Hannon.
Yeah. I didn't feel very transparent. I'll just make that comment, but, and canine care itself is not very transparent on what their standards are. But I do have a question for the attorney. You know, if we strike 22-103, as the rest of it written, would it ensure that this existing store can't open new storefronts or pop-up stores or transfer ownership, anything along those lines?
Well, just maybe, maybe we need to clarify what we kind of have on the table, because right now, what's being considered with the, whoops, I just lost my page, with the amendment would be a prohibition of dog and cat sales at retail pet stores. If we are not proceeding with Section 22-103, which is existing pet stores' exception, then that would mean-
That's the part.
-of right now, there is no exception. So, it would apply to all pet stores if we were to adopt it as posed. Now, what, the way I understood from what Councilman Baker said and what you, Councilmember Hannon, said is, we are not saying right now whether we're taking that out or including it or modifying it, but what I'm understanding is council, we haven't voted on it yet, but at least the mover and the seconder are ready to move forward with the prohibition of the sale of dog and cats by retail pet stores, but we want to take a little more time to look at the impact on existing businesses and what we're going to do with that. So, we're kind of saying we're moving ahead with the first part, but we're tapping the brakes a little bit tonight to revisit what we want to do with regard to the existing shops. So, with that long preamble, now I'll get to your question, Mr. Hannon, and that would be, based on the action you're taking tonight, I would say yes, that any further locations or new pet stores, whether by Puppygram or anybody else, would be subject to the ordinance prohibition.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the long answer to your relatively simple question. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page as to what is currently on the table before you.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. Yeah, and again, just to reiterate, my friendly amendment to the only thing, I think we want, we need to get the seconders' approval on it as well, right? It was simply to table that second clause, pending additional conversation. Again, knowing that this is just the first reading, which means this won't go into effect until we have the second reading, that gives us time to have additional conversations and deliberations on that second clause.
I agree. That's what I was hearing. Everybody's clear on that, then?
Agree.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-1023 as amended? Right? No?
Yes.
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 Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M-0523 has passed as amended. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-323, matter of authorizing the execution of the Public Unit Master Signature Authorization Agreement between the City of Berkeley and Flagstar Bank to provide the necessary authorizations for deposits, withdrawals, and other basic bank business on behalf of the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R-0323?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Grandmayor. As council knows, and hopefully folks at home know as well, the city does do all of its banking, or a good portion of its banking with Flagstar Bank. So, periodically have to update this agreement from time to time in order to have authorized staff members be able to make transactions as listed in the resolution. So, this, this time we get to update it to indicate that we do have an interim finance director and resident Lori Fielder, who has been with our department for quite a while and is now recently taken the reins of leadership within that department. So, we get to make that update now. So, that is the only reflection, there's only change on that, reflected on this item. Myself and city clerk were both on the previous iteration of this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Mr. Stern, do you have anything to add? Just throwing, I just want to be inclusive.
No, no, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
Uh-uh.
Good.
Any discussion from the public? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R-0323?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R-0323 has passed. We are now at the communications portion of tonight's meeting. Ms. Mitchell, who will go first?
Councilmember Baker.
Okay.
Really? Oh, cool. I dig that. Well, Happy March, everybody. I hope you're all staying safe in this crazy weather that we've, that we've seen lately. A couple of quick updates from the committees throughout our community. I'm pleased to report on our Downtown Development Authority, DDA. The board meets in two days' time, coming up on Wednesday, March 8th, across the street in the second-floor conference room, starting at 8:30 in the morning. So, bring your coffee. This included on the agenda for that meeting will be the third DDA reading of the draft budget as we head into the next fiscal year. You know, fiscal year starts on July 1st, and so, we're in the thick of the budgetary process in preparation for that. There'll be some discussion around updates to the mural program applications, how those are received and vetted and approved and based on deliberation. There's the parking study progress, the Coolidge Crosswalks, Rubina North Project, those kinds of things will be, continue to be discussed. And there'll be some fun promotional activities coming up in March. There'll be the Downtown Leprechaun Scavenger Hunt from March 9th to the 19th. The Leprechaun's Day Out, which is the version of the Ladies' Day Out, but it's for the leprechauns among us. That'll be from the 16th to the 19th. And we will have, the next Downtown Block Party, those events have been very successful throughout our downtown, we put them in different locations. This one, conveniently enough, will be at an Irish place called Omaras, and that will be on the 18th of March. So, please, please try to attend those, and if you'd like information on any of that or anything else, you can visit our downtown website at downtownberkeley.com. The other committee I'm pleased to report on tonight is the Historical Committee. The Historical Committee met on Tuesday, February 21st, and they're continuing our preparations as the 100th anniversary of Berkeley as a village. So, we became a village in '23, and then we later became a city, and you switch the numbers, '32. You see how we did that? So clever. They were smart back then. There'll be, so some of you may be familiar with Sears Kit Homes, they're basically like a Sears catalog, you can order stuff, you can buy a house out of the catalog. And Berkeley is one of the largest concentrations of kit homes that's still in existence, and so we'll be having some tours of those kit homes as part of the 100th anniversary celebration coming up. That's being coordinated with the Chamber. I'm sure there'll be more information on that coming, too. It's a great way to see how, to see how those mail-order homes came to be so popular. There will be a 100th Anniversary Magazine delivered to all the residents of the community. The committee is busy writing and editing and finishing up the articles that will go into that magazine, chock-full of photos as well. And there is a time capsule that will be buried as part of the, as part of the 100th anniversary ceremony, and we're working with DPW and Public Safety to find the right spot to put that, but it'll be somewhere here around City Hall. It's basically the size of like an oversized fire extinguisher. So, sadly, we can't fit a whole lot of stuff in there, but there is going to be a process for residents and council to nominate items to go into said time capsules. So, that'll be kind of fun. So, you know, I plan to be here a hundred years from now when we dig that thing out and I say, "Yeah, like that, that was mine." You know, that'll be pretty fun. And visitors are always welcome to the museum. Museum is open Wednesdays from 10 until 1:00, and Sundays from 2:00 until 4:00. And if you want to learn about that or more, you can visit us online at berkeleyhistory.com. And speaking of history, as was mentioned earlier, this is Women's History Month, which is super awesome. Mother Teresa once said, "I alone cannot change the world, but I can cast a stone across the waters to create many ripples." And it was U.S. President Jimmy Carter who first proclaimed Women's History Week in 1980, and that was later ratified into a full-month celebration in 1987. Each of these years has a theme. The theme for this year is, for Women's History Month, is celebrating women who tell our stories. And that can be done through poems, or books, or articles, or songs, or artwork, or, you know, paintings, because storytelling can come in many, many forms, and it is a very powerful way to communicate. And what I like to do to close is just highlight a very small sampling of the amazing women who have helped encourage our imagination and tell our stories here in the City of Berkeley. In 1920, Ruth Schwartzman was our deputy treasurer, having been a leader in the Women's Club of Berkeley and a member of the Berkeley School Board of Education. Berta Leone was an artist with Disney Studios in the 1930s and whose artwork has appeared in local galleries. Melba Marlet and Mabel Sealy were popular authors of mysteries and general fiction in the 1930s and 1940s, all hailing here from Berkeley. Maureen Monty is a photographer whose work has appeared in local galleries, and she was an active member of our Chamber of Commerce and a force behind our Berkeley Art Bash. Amber Bolina is a winner of the Very Special Arts Young Playwrights Program for her work well into August. Carol Ring was one of the founding members of the Berkeley Historical Committee and served as its chair for many years, and Sue Richardson continues that great legacy as chair of the Historical Committee for over 10 years and counting. And our very own mayor, Bridgette Dean, now serves as the mayor, continuing the fine legacy of Marilyn Steffen and many of the other female mayors that preceded her. So, with that, just want to say, you know, thank you, please stay safe, and hug somebody you know, because they need it and they would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker.
Yay.
Councilmember Hannon.
Thank you. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, there were no cases to hear in February, and there's no cases to hear in March, so no news there. The Tree Board met last week. Lawrence Sobson of the Forestry Division for the Department of Natural Resources came and spoke to us-
and spoke to us. He gave us a lot of good input, just a tremendous wealth of information, best practices for managing city trees, some great ideas on reducing tree and sidewalk conflicts, species selection, and gave us information on grant availability. So, and we also learned from him, we're going to need to make a pretty small update to our tree ordinance to keep getting recognition from the Arbor Day Foundation for Tree City USA, so I'll be bringing that soon so that we keep that rolling, which, speaking of, we just learned that we got accredited again for 2022, and this is our 32nd year with that. And their next meeting will be Monday, March 27th. Now, I wanted to just speak briefly on the power outages. I know a lot are very frustrated with DTE and the power outages we had, and, and I know a lot of you have turned to city government for help, and I can assure you, we're doing all that we can, but the unfortunate truth is the state has reserved all the power in these matters for themselves. And last I heard, our government rep from DTE hasn't responded to our inquiries, but, and they aren't legally required to. So if you do have complaints or issues, I have two avenues that I recommend you try. The first is our state senator, Mallory McMorrow. Her office has been very receptive in answering questions as best she can, and DTE is talking to her. And I think the reason is because of part of the legislature, she actually has power over DTE that we don't. Her number is 855-347-8008, and her email is SEN, as in Senator, m.mcmorrow@senant.michigan.gov. However, I also know her office is being deluged with inquiries, so, you know, be understanding if there's a delay in hearing back. And then the second place to go to is the Michigan Public Services Commission. They're the state agency in charge of regulating utilities and in taking in consumer complaints, and they can be reached at michigan.gov/MPSC, or 800-292-9555. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. The Planning Commission held, excuse me, a combined work session meeting with us and council and the public to start discussion of parklets. They introduced it and started the discussion of the parklet, so more information to come on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Dooley?
So the library board, we met last month, and come March 18th is the Friends of the Library Book Sale on Saturday, the 18th, 10 to 3. So please, please go out and support it. All the funds raised from that will benefit all the programs that Matt and his team put so much time and effort into. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Valani? Yes, I want to start off with a very big thank you to our DPW and our public safety teams for all of their extra work during the storms over the past couple of weeks. I know they were responding time and time again to help our residents, whether it's with the chippers, putting out fires with transformers. They are remarkable. I know when I left my house Saturday morning early, our streets were already completely cleared, and when I got to my destination, friends from other towns were complaining about the lack of snow plow removal in their areas. So well done to them, and thank you for all the extra hours they've been putting in there. To everyone who showed up tonight, just to share your concerns, regardless of which side of the topic you are on, thank you for being here. Our government is only as strong as the people that participate in it, so thank you for using your voice to do that. From our TAC and CEAC Committee, there is a meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 PM across the street in Public Safety, if you're interested in joining. And from the Berkeley Area Chamber, a couple of events coming up. Our Chamber Chat is on March 17th at Woodward Corner Markets from 8:30 to 9:30. You can just show up, no need to register. And then if you haven't already had a chance to check it out, the Hometown Art Show is going on now through Thursday, the 9th, at participating Berkeley businesses. So you can visit a multi-location art show at these different places featuring Berkeley school student artwork. So take a stroll, enjoy their artwork, and this artwork can be seen at the Berkeley Public Library, Chris Belli's Bakery, Gatekeeper Games, Nova Chiropractic, Some Girls Boutique, Toadvine Books, Almonds Health and Beauty, Urge Juice, Woodward Corners Market, and Yellow Door Art Market. So a very special thank you to all of our shops and stores that opened up their walls to our students. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Mayor Porton Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. A lot of great things at Parks and Rec, as is usually the case, so come join us at the Community Center for Trivia Tuesday on March 14th at 12:30 PM. Registration is $10, and lunch will be provided, so bring your friends, or just come as an individual. Register now for a Hop in Good Time Bingo Celebration on Tuesday, April 4th at 12:30 at the Community Center. $10 registration includes lunch and two bingo cards. And then check out recreation.berkleymish.org for more on senior trips and activities, youth and adult class lists and registration, and ongoing summer day camp registration as well. So the next meeting of Parks and Rec will be April 13th at 7:00 PM at the Rec Center. And then for the Environmental Advisory Committee, the next meeting will be March 16th at 6:30 on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With the May election quickly approaching, we are hosting four public information sessions for Berkeley voters to learn more about the heavily override request, which will be on the ballot on May 2nd, with AV ballots coming out in March 23rd. The public information sessions will focus on informing Berkeley voters about what a millage will cost them, how and what services are impacted, and why the city is making this request of its voters. The events, we have four events planned. The first of these raucous parties is tomorrow night at the Berkeley Library at 7:00 PM, so at March 7th at 7:00. So please join us, come with your questions. We, we look forward to answering any of them you have, providing any information that we can. Keeping in mind that city, the city as an entity and staff specifically cannot advocate for an outcome, but we can certainly lay our resume on the table and show voters why we feel that we have been good stewards of the public's funds so far. So after the Tuesdays, just as a little plug before our next meeting here, we'll also have one on March 18th at 10:00 AM at Berkeley Parks and Recreation at 2400 Robina as well.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. We've been busy working with, with staff and actually working, working quite a bit in the last few weeks with the Community Development Director Kapilansky, who I think, oh, she is back there still. I knew, I saw her earlier, on various ordinances, some of which you adopted tonight. There's still some others in the pipeline that we're working. That, that's, that's nothing unusual. Spend a lot of time working with community development on, on various things, just seems like lately we've had a number of little, little and small ordinance tweaks. We've also, I think since the last time I was before you, because I missed the last meeting, my partner, Mr. Chris, covered in my place, but I think since the last time we met with you, we got two more favorable court decisions in our marijuana licensing litigation. That, that means that of the licensing decision that the council made and the four appeals that were filed, the city has prevailed on all four of those. And as you recall, in, in December, we got a very favorable Court of Appeals decision that was not, not appealed further to the Supreme Court, and the time has passed to do that, but basically upholding the ordinance. So we're happy with that, but commend the council on, you know, having crafted a very solid ordinance and one that we were able to defend, which is always, which makes us look good, too. And that's good. We still have a little bit of litigation pending. There is one more case that's sort of related to one of these, has been decided, and we're working on getting that dismissed, but we're, I'm hoping, knock wood or fake wood, whatever this is, we're hoping that after all this time seemingly never-ending litigation, I, I think we're getting near the end of it. And so far, so good.
Good.
Hope I didn't just jinx it there.
Right, exactly.
So that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. So I'm going to start by following up with Councilmember Hennan's comment about DTE. We have, since the time we spoke about this, we have heard back from our rep, and she is enthusiastically looking forward to coming to a council meeting soon. She did ask for some guidance about what exactly we're looking for, because she wants to be ready with answers and, and what their plan is on certain things. So we'll be getting back with her and giving her some direction, and then she will come to a meeting, and we will let everybody know about that. So that's a follow-up on that. I would like to take a moment to recognize our incredible Public Safety Department and our DPW for their efforts in the storm this past Friday. Our trucks were out Friday night in neighborhoods, down the main streets, but to Councilmember Valani's point, our, some of our neighboring communities opted to not plow their side streets or their neighborhood streets because, you know, it was going to be 50 on Saturday. So our DPW crews, in my opinion, went above and beyond clearing the streets, not only for our residents, but visitors to Berkeley, so that we could get around and be safe. Later in Friday evening, I became aware of an electrical fire on Princeton. So of course I went over there, and the, I've never seen anything like this, the primary line on an electrical pole blew, and it is truly like 4th of July without the colors, but the, the sound and the sparks and everything. And Lieutenant Kobernick was there and invited me to take a closer look, and it was a little scary crossing the caution tape, but I knew I was in good hands, and I just want to commend our Public Safety Department. They responded to 110 calls. They were tired, cold, but they persevered, and they, they watched this fire, they monitored it, and they, when it was at a moment where they could safely extinguish it, that's what they did. And in spite of, and it was truly scary. I didn't hang around for the whole thing, but, but the level of their training and their professional judgment is second to none, and we are fortunate to, to have such trained men and women serving our city, so thank you for that. And finally, my husband, Michael, and I are celebrating 38 years of marriage this Thursday, so happy anniversary, Mike Dean. We are on the one-day-at-a-time plan. I just want to point that out. But with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani-
Support.
-with support from Councilmember Hennan. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Hmm, yes.
Dean?
Yes. The March 6, 2023 regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council is now adjourned.